Yep, mine's will go live. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Before we begin, I'd like to have the ZBA introduce themselves. I'm Kathleen Bronner, Chair. I'll go to the right.
Stephen Nally, member.
Dakota Richards, member.
I remember.
Brian Tromke, member.
Thank you. And one piece of business before we open the public hearing or as part of our first step, what I've disseminated, just so that we get this done, the minutes from our last meeting, September eighteenth, twenty twenty five. As I shared, there was no changes from the draft that I emailed all of you. Couple typos I corrected. And could it all, our agreement, could I get a motion to approve and accept?
I move that we accept the minutes as presented for the February eighteenth, twenty twenty five meeting. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, it's simple business. So, what I'd like to do, our next step is to read the announcement for this, for this hearing. And then we will begin, okay. The Granby Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April first, twenty twenty five, commencing at five thirty P. M. at two five nine A. East State Street Public Safety Complex Meeting, Granby, Mass., to consider the following petition. Applicant one eighty-five West State Street LLC is appealing a determination from the Granby Building Commissioner, zoning officer, that the outdoor display of goods and wares is not permitted in the GB general business zone and within the mixed-use overlay pursuant to the town zoning bylaws regarding one eighty-five street and known as, as Assessor's Map three dash D dash one point one in the town of Granby. In above, in addition to the above hearings, the Board of Appeals may conduct other agenda items following said hearings as time permits. This notice is given pursuant to Chapter forty A. and Chapter thirty-nine, Section twenty-three B. of the Massachusetts General Bylaws. There we go. And before I, we ask the applicants to present your case, I wanted to share two things. That, as I know you had joined us when there was a joint meeting with the Planning Board, oh, gosh, on February eighteenth.
Yep.
Okay. And in prior to this meeting, well, I've spoken to him several times, but just before this meeting, I confirmed with Town Council erring guards to the bylaw as it is now written, which is three point five point one nine, outdoor display of goods and wares. And when you look across, it does not grant the zoning Board of Appeals any authority to override the, the Granby Building Commissioner. We have no authority to be able to do that, as it was stated in the last, the February eighteenth meeting. Now, having said that, I, you're still welcome to present your case. I'm just as chair and speaking to the, to confirming with Town Council. That was his advice and his counsel. But you're welcome to continue to present your case. But what we wanted to share with you is if you are not approved the special permit and if you don't secure the votes to grant the special permit, you have to wait two years to reapply. You are welcomed to withdraw your application without prejudice, meaning you could apply another time. And so that, that's an option. We wanted to share that with you. And you could move forward. We may not grant it. Or it, I can't speak for the other members. I can only speak for myself as chair, okay? Whether I agree with it or not, it's where our hands are tied on this bylaw, okay? The, is to work with the Planning Board. The ZBA, I can't see through my glasses, I know, you know. The ZBA is not charged with rewriting bylaws. We can, we're consulted, then we could be, you know, we've had those conversations. You were a part of the last meeting on identifying ones we wish to have updated.
Yep.
And the Chair or the Planning Board welcomes our input. But it's not our charge, so we, it's the Planning Board's charge to craft and draft bylaws, updates, okay? So that falls over there. And the process, and Steve, correct me if I off speed, because he's... Is that a bylaw, this bylaw can be identified, updated, probably to be more current and business friendly? Because it doesn't give us any option, okay? Then the process is, I think they have to hold a public hearing? And then, is that correct, Steve? And then to, for anyone who wants to have any input on one bylaw or the multiple that needs to be updated, and then it goes to town meeting.
Correct.
Do you need two thirds to approve?
Typically, two thirds, yes.
Two thirds of the town to approve new bylaws. So I just wanted to give you the sense of the process. So now we have, as you may be aware, some town, town meetings and town issues coming up, special meeting, but, and then the annual meetings in May, correct? I'm not sure that we, that the Planning Board has enough time to move it that quickly. I just trying to be honest with you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
So in the event the applicant chooses to move forward and is denied or approved, whatever the Board chooses here, and the bylaws then changed by the Planning Board, it wouldn't need permit?
Okay, that's a chance. That's not predictable.
No, no, I get, I'm just saying, you know.
Right, yeah. They, they have, if we deny them, it's two years before they can reapply for a special permit to us. If the bylaw changes, that could very well negate all that. You know what I mean?
It wouldn't be a special permit at that point.
Yeah.
Well, it may or may not be, depending on how.
Yeah, or it gives us authority to be able to address it.
Right, right.
Typical Granby lot of unknowns.
It's true, it's true, so.
And if we say we went forward with it and we approve it, is it even legal? Because it's not allowed.
That, that's the issue. That's what I was kind of digging in with Attorney O'Toole.
Approving something that's not allowed.
You know, because I talked about grandfather, okay?
Yep.
Because the Chateau Harmony has been there a long time. It's had many different businesses with the idea of grandfathering.
Yeah.
Applied. He said, no. Because this is a new initiative, not the same owners, you know, over the years. So this would be, and it's not an existing, ongoing business because this is a new initiative that you're starting out selling sheds and, and that. So it's not grandfathered, per his opinion.
The other point I'd like to bring up too.
Yes, please.
Is that part of the discussion we had at that last meeting was the topic, as the minutes even reflect, that we were discussing the situation about goods and wares on display. And we researched the bylaws at that point in time to see what was the definition of goods and wares. And then we made the comment that, because it was not mentioned in the definitions, that it would be up to the ZBA to refine that definition as to what that would be done. Not for, for goods and wares. The problem is, is that the common, the common definition, if you were to look up in dictionaries or Google or whatever, basically is pretty broad, is the research that I have done, indicating that tangible personal property that is for sale by an individual business or, or company covers a whole gamut of things. And it's easily could be construed that, you know, personal property would include merchandise such as sheds or things of that nature. So I think that the ZBA would be hard pressed to refine that definition to include certain items.
Right.
So.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. You know, and from my opinion, this is a bylaw that needs to be updated. I mean, it's, it's, and, or allow... Applicants have a way to address and whether, in granting special permits and who are, who is that authority? Whether it's the ZBA with a special permit and site plan applicable by the Planning Board, you know, or do we change the language, allow it in business areas or multi-use areas and so forth? So, so I just wanted, you know, we've been doing all the talking and you're happy to present. But I just wanted to be fair and transparent that if we do not grant it, you know, it shortchanges you. You have to wait two years to reapply for a special permit if nothing changes on this bylaw. But if the bylaws change, that negates that.
Right.
Right?
Right, and the question is, I think that the Planning Board at our last meeting concurs with the issues that, that we outlined, including the section regarding goods and wares displayed, that they are favorable of changing that.
Right.
The question really is, as the Chair has mentioned, it's going to be a lengthy process. They have to go through public hearings and town meeting and everything else. So that's months, probably. I don't know what the progress they have made on that.
I don't know, I don't know.
But what we're trying to say is we don't want to hamstring you in terms of getting you in a position where you have to wait perhaps a more lengthy period before the bylaws could change. That's what we're trying to communicate to you.
I, when we met with the building inspector and he gave us the determination.
Yeah.
We had been advised by numerous people that if we didn't put this appeal in within thirty days, it was a fatal decision and that is the language, it is fatal. So I think we have no choice but to present today.
Okay.
And I think my wife will continue and read unless you would prefer if I did.
Um, excuse me, if I can.
Sure.
That's partially incorrect.
Okay.
All right, by withdrawing your petition doesn't change the timeline.
I see, okay, okay.
So just to make sure that you're not shooting yourself in the foot.
Sure.
Okay. And my suggestion and recommendation would, would be for the applicant to withdraw without prejudice their application because you don't know, nobody knows when this bylaw is going to be changed. And if you get yourself in a position where you can't reapply within two years, it's probably a much longer period of time that you want to wait.
Well, we, I, I went back and watched Planning Board meetings on YouTube.
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't seen them.
They, they're a great group of people. They're very business friendly and they've been nothing but cooperative with us, some of our tenants. And going back two years, they said, we need to amend this, we need to change this. I mean, they have a... Long list of things on their agenda.
They do, they do.
They do.
And, you know, going back to what you said a second ago about what is it, goods and where? And like, what is the definition of that?
Yeah.
Does it represent personal property? I mean, the guy across from our property, yesterday, the tractor trailer for sale on the side of the road. Now, does that, does that fall into the same rule that we're struggling with here?
It could very well.
I would imagine it does.
And it's a.
Is that, was that private home across from you?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but.
So the, the problem is, is the.
But I, I.
It's a commercial vehicle.
Yeah.
There is no question, and certainly in my mind, and I'm, I'm certain of the Planning Board, yours and the rest of the ZBA, is that the bylaw is ridiculous because there's, you know, countless number of parcels in town that have goods and wares being displayed for sale.
Yes.
And that doesn't make it any more palatable.
Sure.
It certainly is not fair. And we are sympathetic towards that. The problem personally that I'm faced with is, like I say, researching the definition, the general definition, whether it's a dictionary, Google or whatever, Google, is extremely broad.
It's very vague, yes.
You know, and that doesn't, is not consistent to your cause, is my view.
Sure. Well, I think we, we would like to proceed.
I have questions.
Go ahead.
And you'll forgive me.
Oh, no, 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 please.
So to be clear, we have a choice of proceeding.
Yeah.
Right.
And you will all have a vote as to whether or not we can or cannot proceed with what we want to do.
Granting a special permit, right, correct.
If you grant us, we just walk out the door and we move on and we do what we want to do in, within purview, like of what.
Right, right, yeah.
If not, we're stuck for two years before we can reapply.
Unless the bylaw changes.
Unless the bylaw changes.
Which could take two years.
Or, or more, we don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know. So there's no guarantee for that.
So this is a struggle for you and I understand that.
Yeah.
All right, and again, withdrawing your petition protects your right of bringing it at any time.
That's true, that's a very big point.
All right, so if something changes within a month or so, let's just do a hypothetical, then you are free to reapply for that petition, all right? But again, I don't want to encourage you that things are going to change in the months time because that's not likely. My, I'm hoping that the Planning Board can find its way to make these significant changes to the bylaws as quickly as possible. But again, even if they were to do it tomorrow, it would still be probably a couple of months because they have timing issues with public hearings and things of that nature.
And, and just to add, Stephen, and I can't speak for the Planning Board, but I met with Jim Bromke a few weeks ago. And, and that was following the February eighteenth meeting. And, and what we did was to sit down and identify the bylaws that, like the top five that need to be addressed, right? There was this one, there was the whole barn issue, you know, and other ones. And I do know, and I would encourage you to outreach directly to the Planning Board, that they do have a consultant that they're working with. And I think they got some grant money, so they're very tuned to getting this work done. So I, I can't say what their timetable is because I'm not sure what else they have going on. But I know it is part of the Chair's priorities to address that.
Okay, and you also mentioned that you had spoken with council and council told you what about this particular?
Okay, this particular bylaw, so if I can, is, let me show you. It's easier if I can just.
I, I've, I've seen it.
Okay, fine.
Yep.
So, okay, so we're, under the, this grid, it gives you the granting.
Yes or no?
Yes or no? So it can be ZBA or the Planning Board, so forth, okay? If you look at three point five one nine, outdoor display of goods and wares, there's no granting authority. So it's not, as it's written now, it's not allowed. And it doesn't allow any of, whether it's the ZBA or the Planning Board, sometimes it's Board of Health, whatever, the ability to override or adjust that bylaw. Because it, it, there is no, and that's where I was talking to council about. And he goes, well, no, it's, no, 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 there's no one, at this point, no one has the granting authority to grant a special permit or a variance or depending on whatever you need it.
And who's supposed to be overseeing this? Who's supposed to be overseeing and enforcing this? The zoning inspector.
He's the zoning officer.
He's his own the officer.
And, and just to be clear, Marilyn does her presentation and at the end of it, am I clear that you folks could make a determination, have a vote and make it determine whether we can or cannot proceed?
That, that's, that's the purpose of the hearing. That's the purpose of the hearing, so that in the normal course of a hearing is for the applicants to make their presentation, make the case. And, and sir, I'm not sure if you're in a butter. I, I, okay.
You're by the neighbor.
Oh, okay, so if someone's in a butter, you know, we invite anyone who has vested interest in the property and make a comment, pro or sometimes con. And after we've heard that, the members can also ask questions. We then close the public portion of the hearing. And at which time we open the ZBA meeting and at that point is when we take the vote or have any other questions. But at that point, once we go from hearing to meeting, public discussion ends.
Okay.
Okay? So what Steve, and correct me, I don't like putting words in Steve's mouth. So what Steve is suggesting is if you, before we go through that process, close the hearing, and as far as I know, we'd have to take a vote one way or the other, correct?
Unless we continue it.
We could continue it. But that's, that's. But there's no reason to. Is for you to consider withdrawing the application without prejudice, meaning that you could reapply at any time.
Once the process is started, it has to be finished.
Yeah.
I just have a question, just not on this, well, pertaining to it, but.
Yeah.
On that general, general business district, where, where does that run down to O two? Does it start at Five Corners someplace or? I'm just wondering because, and maybe there because it's agricultural, but the grain store and.
Our, our property is the last.
Yeah.
Because that's the one, they're, they're, they're displaying wares.
Well, there's plenty of people in the same district. Yeah, but I mean, I don't know if that's the same business district.
So I guess, before we move forward, did you guys want to step out and talk?
Yes.
No.
I wouldn't let. You want to have a private conversation? No, take your time. Go ahead, can we?
I move that we take a recess for five minutes, ten minutes?
Sure.
Not, five is perfect. I don't think we even need that. Five, I support that. All in favor, recess five minutes, please.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks for helping out.
That's all right.
General.
Yes.
Reopen hearing.
Yes, all in favor to reopen hearing?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm going to read my letter and I'm going to proceed.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
I appreciate you sharing all the information with me. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so bear with me.
No.
This has been a little bit of a meeting here, so.
No, no, take your time.
Good evening, members of the zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you for your time and for your service to the town of Granby. I am here this evening seeking approval to sell prefabricated sheds, greenhouses and structures on my general business zone property within the mixed-use overlay district despite the existing bylaw that states no goods or wares may be sold outside. We have already presented to the Granby Planning Board, which was in support and approval of our venture. Further to this, the members of the Planning Board also attended the zoning board meeting on February eighteenth to raise this matter and discuss the conflicting zoning bylaws directly. Their involvement and support underscore the practicality and appropriateness of this request. While the original intent of the bylaw may have been to preserve the town's aesthetic character and maintain order, this case, my case, presents unique and practical circumstances that I feel justify approval. Nature of the goods, the items in question, sheds, greenhouses, chicken coops and such, are outdoor structures by definition. These are not products that can logically or effectively be displayed inside of a building. Customers need to see them in their intended use environment and placing them indoors would undermine the integrity of the sale and consumer confidence. These structures are manufactured off-site in Massachusetts by Old Hickory Buildings and Sheds, which is a highly reputable and well-established company. Old Hickory Structures has been in business since nineteen eighty-seven, almost forty years, and they construct engineered certified structures that meet or exceed state building standards. The company has successfully operated over one thousand dealer locations across thirty-seven U. S. States and seven Canadian provinces, further demonstrating its track record compliance and quality. As far as step two here, agricultural relevance, Granby has historically and fundamentally been an agricultural community. Structures like sheds, greenhouses and animal shelters are not only common here, but they are essential to farming operations. The ability to purchase these types of structures locally serves the needs of working farms and homesteads and aligns with the town's longstanding agricultural identity. Our property is zoned general business and selling outdoor structures is a use that fits naturally within a commercial zoning designation. This activity does not alter or expand the character of the zoning. It merely reflects a logical extension of its permitted uses. As far as precedent and comparables, comparable businesses such as nurseries, garden centers, farm equipment sales, auto dealerships routinely display merchandise outdoors due to the nature of their goods. This proposal is neither disruptive nor inconsistent with existing commercial practices in Granby. Economic and community benefit. This new business venture will provide critical financial support for my family and business during a time of economic instability. It offers a path forward for us as business owners by diversifying our offerings and increasing traffic to our property. At the same time, it benefits our many long-term tenants, all of our tenants, by drawing in new shoppers both from Granby and from neighboring towns, many of whom may not even know our location exists. This increased visibility and foot traffic will help strengthen the overall business ecosystem on the property. In addition, the sale of greenhouses and similar structures supports sustainable living practices such as home gardening and food production, which are of massive growing interest across our country.
I'm going to read, are you okay?
I'm fine.
All right.
Number six, unequal enforcement of the bylaw. We are approaching this effort respectfully, professionally, and as stewards of the town of Granby. Yet despite these good faith efforts, this process has been a hurdle, especially when we observe the numerous other businesses throughout town, whether located in business or residential zones openly and continuously ignoring this exact same bylaw. From pool toys and bottled water to coffee mugs, firewood, pet food, sweatshirts, T-shirts and more, it is clear that the sale and display of goods and wares outdoors are occurring regularly and without consequence. These violations seem to go unnoticed or undressed while we have chosen to go through the proper process openly, transparently and by the book. Property maintenance, the display area as well as our entire property will continue to be kept orderly and professional. Structures will be thoughtfully placed and the grounds maintained to ensure visual order and safety. The display will not generate any noise, require any additional lighting or be obtrusive or offensive to passersby or neighboring residences. It will be located at the furthest east end of our parking lot and several hundred feet from our closest neighbor. Our property includes approximately seven hundred feet of road frontage on roughly five acres and three exit and entry points providing ample space and natural buffering for any adjacent properties or traffic flow. In conclusion, this request is not an attempt to bypass the bylaw but a call for a rational interpretation of its application in a specific context. My intent is to engage in a legitimate, commercial activity that aligns with the town zoning. My business, Chateau Sheds, will serve the agricultural, residential and business needs of our community and reflects a common sense use of a business zone property while also helping local business owners, our tenants and my business to thrive. And I thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Sorry. No, 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 no. No. Take a breath, take a breath.
Madam Chair, before we move forward, just that we're in, we're moving forward with this, I have to make a disclosure.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Pursuant to Master and Law, two sixty-eight A., Section twenty-three B. three, I'm just disclosing that I've represented a tenant of theirs at the said property. at the said property, but I have not um I have not uh represented them.
Oh, okay, so you've
Sorry, couldn't get the words out, I don't know.
Can it put out the applicant?
Correct, but that is on file with the town clerk as well.
Okay.
Very good.
Can it not, yeah, I'm I'm taking this down. And um further questions for the applicant and I know we have
We have a uh
Yes, um would you like to uh say your name and address and any comments?
Sure. Yeah, my name is Glenn.
Glenn.
Martin, M A R T I N.
Yeah.
And I'm at one seventy-seven West State Street.
Uh-huh.
So I'm almost within sight or within sight. And um my interest in being here is not specific to this application, but rather specific to this bylaw.
Uh-huh.
And I want to understand the the status of of this bylaw.
Okay.
So it's not um for or against uh what you're doing, it's more that I want to um see where this bylaw is headed.
Okay, okay, uh well, thank you, Glenn.
Sure.
Um as ju- just to answer your question and and you've heard our discussion earlier is as the bylaw states now, um that um I have to put my glasses on again. Outdoor display of goods and wares are now allowed in the bylaws. Now, just to uh as to add to that is so like say if you're looking at Sapowskis or um yeah Dickinson's, which is agriculture. That has a whole different set of rules, so I just wanted to add that.
Yes.
It as add for agricultural, it has, you know, is allowed and I know, um go ahead.
So I was uh also, you know, planning board meeting.
Yes.
It was a specific uh bylaw as well.
Uh-huh.
And um that was a number of months ago.
Okay.
And um anyway, I understood at that time that they were working with the town council
Mm-hmm.
to understand um you know where it's all headed, so anyway, that's the point.
Oh, okay, well, thank you, thank you for your interest, um you know, um questions by the board members for the applicants or comments?
Only if the uh if the applicant has concluded their presentation.
Oh.
Then I move to close the public hearing portion of this meeting.
Have you concluded your presentations or anything like you'd like to add?
I think Marilyn.
Did an outstanding job.
Yes.
You did, thank you.
Been waiting on her all day.
More than today.
Yeah.
Okay.
You did good.
Um, yes, do I have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um so we are are now in the deliberations
Deliberate.
and part of the ZBA public meeting, okay. It breaks my heart, and I'll speak first and then I'll please turn over to you, I I I feel the pain, you did a great presentation.
Thank you.
Um, and um it's however, whether as ZBA planning board or any infrastructure of the town committees that can support business growth for the community, I wholeheartedly support. Um, because that type of economic diversity and traffic only enhances our town and the vibrancy of our town. But having said that, our hands are tied, i- is my perspective on this particular bylaw. Um, that it, that we don't have the authority to grant a special permit because it's not allowed, uh there's no out here. Um, having said that, I'm um will be pleased to outreach to the chair or the planning board to see, I can't speak for them, but outreach to them and to share the importance of taking a look at this particular bylaw and if possible, moving the processes as quickly as possible. There's no guarantee how quick it can be, but I mean, I would be happy to to pledge to to do that. Um, so that's that's my opinion, okay?
Sure.
Okay. Anyone?
Where do you start?
I have.
Where do you start? Um, we're in a tough situation. Um, I guess I I tend to look back at other towns and how they do stuff surrounding us um to kinda get a feel of if they're advanced farther than we are in certain things. I know we probably can conclude what the rest of that should say. Um, I guess my biggest thing is it happens everywhere, it's and I understand the process, I understand, I'm just speaking out loud, my thoughts is that um even if they were to attempt to get a permit to do this, if they had a giant warehouse, would that change anything? Not that I'm saying it'd be cost effective whatsoever, but it's something they can take these and put them inside if they wanted to. Um, I'm not quite sure it's gonna be any, it's not gonna be detrimental to any of the surrounding areas any more than anything else is either. Um. I don't know.
Yeah, uh I I feel that it's very vague in its wording.
Yeah.
Outdoor display of goods and wares, does that mean offense or art, what I what is that? It doesn't really even define what a good is or a wear is.
Right.
So, but it seems like we're not really given the authority to
That's that's where I'm stuck.
I mean, I, you know, I think selling sheds is great, it's a great business.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's an area that would support it, but it looks, in in my opinion, the the bylaw is extremely vague.
Right.
But it and but even with that, I don't see how we, I don't, my personal interpretation is I don't see if we have the authority to even move forward with this.
Your um Steve's, I guess I wanna circle back to the eighteenth, February eighteenth, when we had our other meeting and you both have attended it along with the planning board. You made a comment about deciphering, you've been around the block a lot longer than most of us on the table. And you had mentioned about, you know, interpretation of the bylaws that you were reading somewhere at some point, um did you ever ask council about that?
Um, yes, I did, and um because of the way that um under the authority to grant or to address various special permits or such is not given to this bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
It's not allowed. So, given an interpretation, Brian, attorney, didn't see that we, we as a ZBA had that authority for that interpretation. Whether for right or wrong. If you look at how this is stated.
Mr. Habbis.
I just, I just wonder if there's a little bit of a precedent set over the past years in that area where the grain stores and all these other places are displaying things and I I'm in favor of it. Uh, I I I just wonder if we were to grant this and then they changed the bylaw in uh six weeks, then it would all be solved, but you know.
Yeah.
If it could be happen that fast, but
Similar to the Maximilian Drive scenario with the additional dwelling unit prior to legalization, February twenty-five.
Yeah, in the new, in the new state mandate, yeah.
We moved, we moved to issue the permit and it was up to him if he wanted to record it, cause the applicant has to record it at the registry of deeds.
Yeah.
Um from my knowledge of looking into stuff, the only way to reverse a special permit is to have a private party contest it in court.
Yeah. Something to go appeal it.
And then that takes over, you have to appeal it and and they have to spend time and money on that. Um, the likelihood of that, I haven't
And and I think if any of the butters were opposed to it, they'd probably be here.
I agree.
Or they have the, you know, the chance to be here.
Right.
So, I don't know. I think it's a good thing to do there, I mean
Yeah.
That business has been there forever, I mean, I remember when it was a banquet hall.
Yeah. Good restaurant.
Yeah, it was, it was the place to have your wedding there back in its day.
Yeah.
We have some old pictures of it, you haven't wanna see them.
Yeah, we do.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, let me begin by saying, no good deed goes unpunished. Um, the applicant has made a compelling argument. And personally, as Mr. Habb said, I I think it's a perfect, perfect situation in terms of bringing business to this town. However, the problem lies in the poorly written, poorly thought out bylaw um that prohibits the display of goods and wares. And even at our last meeting, uh we tried to look up the definition as outlined in our zoning bylaws and the de- definition is not determined. So that brings us to, the ZBA has the authority to look at what the definition might or might not include. Unfortunately, what I've discovered, and I've looked at more than a half a dozen various sources for the good, the definition of goods and and wares, every one of them is extremely broad in its in its scope. Meaning any personal property, tangible personal property and even intangible personal property um that is for sale by a individual or a business, um is so broad that it doesn't exclude this particular uh situation for sheds and greenhouses and so forth. It puts the zoning board of appeals at a very, our our back is against the wall. We can't hang our hat on any specific definition of goods and wares that would be favorable to to your operation. And it pains me, quite frankly, um that um I believe the town council is correct. We can't in good conscious, conscious um reverse the decision of zoning enforcement officer because the language is so broad and vague. Again.
Yeah, and 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 Steve, just to add to what you're saying, is I agree with you on the language. But even if the language was as broad as it was listed, if it allowed some authority, whether it was by the planning board or the ZBA, to address it, that that would, I we'd have the hook.
We'd have a little hook.
We would have a little hook.
Yeah.
But we have no hook.
The the biggest problem is the definition.
Yeah.
All right, if if the broad definition was, for example, I mean, your argument that you can't put these things inside the building easily because they're big, you know, it's a very logical argument. But if the broad definition, if you were to search any dictionary or Google or whatever the case is, if it said something to that effect, that it, you know, was not, let's say that goods and wares was limited to clothing or food or something like that, more specific, then you'd have a shot at this, I think. But because every definition I've been able to determine is so broad, you can't possibly justify excluding um sheds and greenhouses and so forth. Uh, again, your presentation is well crafted, well thought out, you're passionate about this and I share your compassion because I think it's a perfect situation for the town.
I know, I do too, I do too.
What's the point of being able to appeal the commissioner's decision if it comes to us, it's not in our purview?
Well, the, that's not, well, this thing is not quite factual, I mean, basically,
Well, okay.
the job of the zoning board, first of all, the building commissioner and the zoning enforcement officer are the 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 enforcer of the laws, okay, of the bylaws. And whenever a person is aggrieved in any fashion for any reason, uh their only recourse is first to the zoning board of appeals for relief. We can only grant relief when the relief can be justified. In other words, um if the decision, using the definition example, um if it's not defined in there, then we have the authority to research what the common meaning is for whatever the words are. And if we found a perfect example where it says good and ware are, wares and goods are, you know, grocery items or clothing and limited to those two things, then we have the authority to interpret that to say the building commissioner made an error in his decision to include sheds and and greenhouses as goods and wares. Unfortunately, we don't have that luxury, the definitions are very, very broad. So, the recourse then is um the zoning board of appeals, if they can find something to interpret the correct meaning of what the bylaw means, then we have the authority to reverse the building official's decision. Unfortunately, again, in this case, that opportunity doesn't allow us to do that.
And and Dakota, just to add too, is that even though if the bylaw states that we do not have the authority, okay? Um, and that because I, again, I checked with council, applicants have every right
To appeal.
To appeal.
Any decision.
Or to present their case, even knowing that it may not be positive, but that we can't deny the applicants their ability to present their case.
Right.
Uh, in all fairness. Um that's what it is. Okay, am I allowed to say anything, nothing? Um, are we, any other discussion? Okay.
And madam chair, there's no other discussion. I move that the zoning board of appeals decline the petition of the applicant and uh uphold the building official, zoning enforcement officers' um conclusion.
Do I have a, do I have a second? Is there discussion, I should say first, right?
Yes, a second first.
Second?
Second.
Second, any discussion, any any further discussion? Okay. Could I have those all in favor of uh Mr. Nally's motion to decline? Um, all in favor, I'm in favor, in favor. And and those opposed? Two. Thank you, um. So, your application has been declined. Because for it to have been uh approved, it would have to have been a four, positive of four out of five. So, um what we will do is I'll write up the notes. And if I may, I'd like to give you my email so you can email me your notes, cause I would like to include it.
Include that in my
Include that with the record, if you didn't mind.
Well, that
Her presentation.
Yeah, you should just give it to you.
Yeah, oh, that would be great, because I'd love to, it was so well done.
Well, well done.
I would like to include it for the formal record.
So can we speak now, off like this part of the process?
One sec.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is uh so our next step is that um I will, uh we will complete the standard forms for the outcomes and notice of the decision. This will be filed with um uh town hall tomorrow, I'll drop everything off. Um, it has been declined, do they, is there still a twenty day period, Steve, if we've declined or declined is declined?
Declined is declined.
Declined is declined. So, um because the ZBA has formally declined um your uh application for a special permit, um to formally uh reapply is a two year period, as we stated in the beginning of the meeting. Now, having said that, um as I said earlier, I will outreach to the chair of the planning board, share the outcomes of this meeting and um I would encourage you to outreach to the planning board.
You you do have our support.
And you have your s- our support, so outreach, get on, get on, get on the agenda, I'm not sure what their meeting schedule is, um and talk to them, um I will outreach to the chair and let him know the outcomes of this hearing. Um, and Um, and uh because the updating, the rewriting of the bylaws, uh it falls under the planning board, so uh Mr. Trumpy um and his and his board will have to address this. So, I think if anything, um I won't speak for Jim, but this might spur this on to get this this process going. Um, so it's with a heavy heart, but our hands were tied in this particular situation.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
Uh, since it was denied.
Yeah.
If they change the bylaw.
If they change the bylaw.
There's no issue.
Then there's no issue.
You don't have to wait.
Oh, that's my point, yeah, good point, right.
You don't have to wait.
Yeah, so if they change the bylaw, update the bylaw, whether it's allowing it or giving authority to any of uh.
The special permit process.
Special permit process, whether it's the planning board's side approval or us for a special permit. You're good to go.
Do you think it would be helpful at their business to uh start a petition and have customers sign it for, to present the the in support of it, if they're gonna do?
You know what, I'm not gonna speak for the planning board.
No, but I mean.
But I always say, um, the the way things are going to stay, advocacy is always a good thing.
It wouldn't hurt.
No.
You know, a- advocacy advocacy can affect change.
Yeah.
If there's no other business, then then I move to a journal reading?
Yes. Yes, I.
By second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.